Okay, good evening, we're gonna call the September 23rd Board Meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Feesal?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in saying...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda, and we do not have any changes. So do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Do you have a second?
Oh, sorry.
And Ms. Hatfield, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yeah.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Feesal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our one and only presentation tonight is the Orange High School Baseball Turf Presentation. You wanna join us at the... or are you coming up here? Oh, you're doing a presentation, so you're up here. Yep, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I'm Brett Deal, I'm the Athletic Director at Orange High School, and Coach Markers with me tonight. He's actually going to speak, as he did most of the legwork for this project.
Thank you.
So, I'm Tom Marker, head baseball coach at Old Tangi, Orange High School. I also teach at the middle school, sixth grade math at Old Tangi, Orange Middle. So, do I just scroll, is it gonna be on there?
Yeah.
So, that's the design, layout of our field currently without the turf. And we titled it "What's Possible." What we're trying to do at Orange Baseball, within our program from eight to eighteen, is just developing a life experience for our guys, giving them elite opportunities in order to do that. We think the next step in our progression is to provide a turf baseball field. So, we've received two different quotes. One was AstroTurf and one SprintTurf. We went over this with the Facility Committee a few weeks ago, and just talked to them about the differing companies doesn't really change the grade of the turf. Everybody gets their turf from the same, same three companies down in, down in Georgia. So, whether you go through AstroTurf or SprintTurf, you can kinda change the specs to meet your needs. The difference in pricing is roughly $7,000. We would like to go with SprintTurf. AstroTurf has to delay getting their turf, they're not gonna be able to get it till after the new year, and you need a certain degree temperature to lay the turf, and a certain amount of days in order to do that. If we went through AstroTurf, it would delay us into the start of our season. So SprintTurf can begin as soon as we're granted permission to do so. We've received donor contributions, they can be deposited. Once we've gained approval, the donors have come through and been able to come up with $275,000 towards this project. And so we're able to make that deposit into our booster account as soon as, like I said, if it were to happen tonight or the next day, we can, we can have it in by the end of next week to pay for it, to cover the entire cost. So, it's at no cost of our program upfront in terms of donors making that contribution. The benefit, and we went kinda through analysis, and benefit to help our players and our, and our overall program, but if you think about a baseball team, when you get done with the game, the, the day doesn't end for our players or our coaches. We're required to clean up the field, whether it's raking broom and cleaning up dirt clumps, tarping the field. Roughly during the course of a season, that's sixty-plus student athlete hours, working on the field before and after game. And I think that's a lot different than your normal traditional sports. With football, having a turf field, they don't have, you know, work required to, in the upkeep of a field. So, this time could be used on other things. I just, I just said, you know, you could use it towards schoolwork, or family time, or social life, or more baseball, or whatever the case may be. But, but to limit those hours that our kids put into maintaining the field, I think is, is a huge benefit. Increase revenue and rentals. We rent our facility, our field out in the summer, teams, summer teams. And we currently charge 125 a game. I know Old Tangi Liberty, who has two turf fields, charges 150 a game. Grove City, who has a turf field, charges 150 a game. So we'd be able to increase the revenue that we bring in utilizing our field. Increase training opportunities with the weather up north, a turf field obviously gives you opportunities. We've had guys come to the field at 5:00 AM before school regularly last year. If it rains the night before and we have to pull the field tarp, the entire tarp, they have to get there early in the morning. So that's again, another, another thing that they wouldn't have to put hours and time into, and we'd still be able to utilize the field that day. Long-term increase financials, again, just through the rentals of the field, and the cost that it takes to keep care of a natural surface. So a natural surface, just this fall alone, if we were not to go to turf, we'd have to add saw to the field, we'd have to regrade the field, just through the rentals and things, the usage of it over the course of the summer, just the wear and tear. And then your yearly costs are updated on there too, you know, top dressing of the, of the grass, the clay that goes into the field, whether you're maintaining a mound or a plate, and then field equipment as well. Just so you kinda understand how our funding works within our baseball program, we have our overarching Orange Baseball account. But we separate those into two distinct categories. So we have our, our capital funds, which, that's money that we use solely for the improvement of our facilities, whether it's our indoor hitting facility, or whether it's our baseball field. We utilize those funds that way. So when I make a deposit into our booster account, I'll tell our boosters, you know, earmark this as capital fund, or earmark this as operating funds. What operating funds are is day-to-day operations. I tell our players and our families, we don't wanna change the day-to-day experience that our kids get. So when they do our sub-sale, or they do our mulch sale, that money's earmarked for operating funds, which means that improves their equipment, that improves the spring, improves the spring trip that we go on, uniforms and day-to-day needs. On the other side, you see, if we do ads on our outfield fence, or donors say, you know, we wanna make a donation towards our program, like we're getting for this turf, or facility rentals, or field rentals, or anything along those lines, that goes into the capital funds, and that's what we use to make facility upgrades and make field upgrades. So we put them in two distinct areas, just, we always thought if a kid sells mulch or sells subs this year, but we're planning to use that money for a field that we get in three to five years, he kinda fundraised for something that he didn't get the opportunity to utilize. So we try to separate those funds that way. Now, if we got into a pinch, which again, two years ago with COVID, we almost did, we could always pull from operating funds and shift that over. One thing we never do is we never pull from capital funds and shift it over to operating funds. But it could, and in a, in a pinch, have to go the opposite direction. So we, we share that information with our, with our parents at each booster meeting that we have. So again, I, I think the, the benefit to this, to our program, again, it enhances the experience, it cuts down on the time and energy and effort that our kids have to put into maintaining the field, although I do think there's a lot of benefits to that as well, in teaching them the hard work, and they step back and look at the field that they take care of. But we'll just try to teach that through other means going forward. So I think this is, again, the next step in the progression. We have the money ready to go, again, at no cost to our parents or anything along those lines, donations and people who've come through to, to contribute to what we're doing at Orange Baseball. Oh, and then as far as replacement turf, so usually the life of turf is ten years. And that's usually on a football field, that gets football, lacrosse, field hockey. On a baseball field, you might get twelve, but we just plan for ten. And so the way that we plan to replace that, so if you spend $250,000 on turf, the estimated replacement cost is 125. We've done the financials over a ten-year period, so in year 2031, if every financial held true off of the, we did it off the COVID year, which is, to me, a low income or a low profit year, but I just wanted to take it on the low end. At year 2031, we'd have over $350,000 in our capital improvement fund, when we need roughly 150. If you even bump that for inflation, just go to 200, we're still well on our way. So we'll use the field rentals and things along those lines to put us in a position to renew the turf in ten years.
Question? I just wanna say the process for doing this... The process for doing this, whether it's a field, or a wrestling room, or a dugout expansion, the boosters raise the money, and then they have to present it to our Facilities Committee first. And depending on what is being done, they have to go through special steps through the Facilities Committee to make sure that, you know, some, you know, someone's just not doing it on a side job. I mean, everything has to be approved, all of the necessary paperwork has to be approved. If there's, you know, any type of, any type of special building permits that are needed, they have to be done. And because, at the end of the day, then that project becomes the ownership of the school district. And so we have to make sure that what we are going to be receiving is done up to code. And so this has been, we, the board has established these policies. I remember many years ago, Dave and I sat through a forty-hour meeting on turf, and how it's created, and the benefits of turf, and this was when we were doing our football field. And so everything is vetted, and the cash has to be, you know, in hand, so that it's not a cost to the taxpayers. And then you just heard how he plans to then replace it when it comes time to be replaced. He also pointed out here that he has the capital side and the operation side. I'll tell you, he's very organized, I can tell you're a math teacher, you know, and speaking that way. And on one of the things, under operations, he had uniforms, because these teams, they buy their uniforms. The school district doesn't buy uniforms, you know. So, he will buy a uniform when the school opens, and that's it. Then the teams are, you know, they're buying their uniforms, and sometimes they get help from their athletic director through funds that are generated from athletics, but most of the time, they're, they're raising the funds. So, you had a great image up there that explained the whole process, so thank you for doing that.
The only thing I'd add is, you know, as Julie mentioned, the boosters have a demonstrated track record of raising the money, identifying and cultivating the revenue stream for replacement. We did three turf football fields, we did a turf baseball field at Liberty. So the track record of the boosters and the discipline of the boosters has been well demonstrated and documented. And I think this is a great plan, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a Board President's Report, and I just have a short report, because in the coming weeks, we have a lot on our agenda, and so I just wanna prepare everybody for what is upcoming. On October 12th, that's our next meeting, that's a Tuesday. We had to move it to a Tuesday for, because we had some, some things that weren't lining up properly. So on October 12th, we will have a Board Policy Update. We update our policies, and first they go through, and it's not every policy, it's policies that have been changed and need updated. It goes through, again, the Policy Committee first, just like the Facilities Committee. It's made up of volunteers, the Policy Committee is made up of volunteers. We have, you know, an attorney on there, HR professionals on there. So they review the policies. I know Lakeisha and Mindy are the liaisons to that committee. Jack Fettie heads it up. So we'll be looking at some new policies, and then we'll be having the Academic Achievement Report. And that's based off some state tests, and also some testing that we have done. Unfortunately, there was some misinformation out there last week. Yes, the school district, in the grades that they were required by law to give state tests, they did give state tests. Now, some parents who had CD, the students on the, the CDL program, because of the way the state has, runs their state tests, they would've had to bring their students into the building when those students were learning online. Even though they, they were learning online, they had to bring them into the building to take those tests. So some parents chose not to have their students take those tests and come into the building. So while we gave the test by law, all the tests that were required by law, some students did not participate, and that was their parental right to do that. We will also be having, oh, and then on October 28th, then we're back to the Thursday meetings. We will have an enrollment update, which is very important, and a financial forecast. So these are major issues that are coming up in October. Policy, academics, enrollment, and the financial forecast. Those are the four main areas that the school board members oversee, and so you're gonna be getting a lot of information in those upcoming meetings. And that is my report. Mr. Ray?
Good evening, good evening everyone, thanks again as always for being here. Starting off again with some Living the Mission Good Things slides. The National Merit Scholars have been announced. We had ten students at Orange High School, nine at Liberty, three at Old Tangi, and three at Berlin. The National Merit semifinalists are based off of the performance of these students on the PSAT test, and that is, students, these students scored in the top one-half of one percent in the nation. So congratulations to all of those students and their families, that's a significant achievement. We, our People Services and Technology Teams like to give a shout-out to them for the, putting on the multilingual family night, actually last evening at Orange Middle School. We had about 700 families were invited to learn about how to use all of our electronic resources. So that, that was very well received by our multilingual families. Give a big compliment to Krishna here. He's a Liberty High School student and an Old Tangi Academy student, and he has been on the Science Fair circuit. He participated in the Ohio STEM, he Believe in Ohio STEM Entrepreneurship Award at the State Science Day. He received the Engineering Award and the Science and Technology Award at the North Central District Science Day, and superior excellent ratings at the District State Science Days that occurred here this, since the beginning of the school year. He certainly has a passion for STEM programming. I have not seen the presentation, but I'm gonna go take a visit and get a presentation. Actually, might consider bringing Krishna here to share with you, because it is obviously pretty interesting stuff. Just again, amazing things our, our kids are able to do. Last evening, we attended the Ohio School Board Association Central Region Awards. We nominated two of our people for that. Jen Fury, on the right there, received the Exemplary School Employee Award for her work last year with our Committed Distance Learning Program. And Sharon Jurowitz, who is, received an award called the Friend of Public Education. And Sharon has been a tireless volunteer for our district, chairs the Facilities Committee. She will be giving the presentation on the Enrollment Report, and she's also been on redistricting committees. So she's just an invaluable asset, and we appreciate all that she does, so. Middle School Six is well underway, if you haven't been up there recently. It, I think the last time I went by, obviously all the site work was done. You see there, a drone shot, the field is, is getting laid out. There is one exterior wall, almost complete. I saw, already saw some of the things that hold up the roof.
Trusses.
Trusses, thank you, Mr. O'Brien, trusses. Mr. King, I gave you an opportunity, buddy. You're the architect. I saw a bunch of trusses are delivered, so they're, they're, again, on time. Actually, I think they're ahead of schedule, so we're, we're looking in good shape there at Middle School Six. Couple action items to note, we're accepting the resignation for retirement for Mrs. McMurray, who is in the audience. Hello, Mrs. McMurray, thank you for all that you've done. She's thirty-eight years in public education, California, Georgia, and Ohio, and we wish her nothing but the best, although we do have her locked up to be a potential sub-principal if we need that in the future, so it'll be nice to have her in the bullpen. You have a lease on there with Tower Co. for a cell tower going in at Middle School Six, and I think you, you saw in your, in your support documents, Mr. Gordon did a really good job of negotiating. It's a much better lease than what we have on the, on the cell tower at Berkshire Middle School. Significantly more monthly revenue, he also, there's also a $50,000 capital contribution, and we're gonna take that, that money and put it in the PI fund. So, that, that was a good thing, again, compliments to Mr. Gordon. And then we have the purchase of a new chiller, and that again is part of our normal permanent improvement projects that, that we have going on throughout the district for Tyler Run Elementary. And a couple important dates coming up, we are starting our Town Hall Series. We'll be here in the Old Tangi High School Auditorium on October 6th. We're gonna do four of those Town Halls. So October's gonna be a busy month, and then our next Board Meeting, October 12th, at a location to be determined. So, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Ray?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The Treasurer's Report, please.
Good evening. There we go, okay. I thought I turned it off completely for a minute, I, my heart fluttered. I thought I was gonna have to start calling for technology help. So thank you for letting me give you an update. We have several items that are not action items that I wanted to go over with you. The Fair School Funding Plan Work Group 2.0. I wanted to mention this because there's been a lot of conversation about the Fair School Funding Plan. That particular funding model made it into this biennial budget for the state. But as you may remember, it's not fully funded at this time. The original plan was to have a six-year phase-in of the funding, and so this biennial budget has put into law years one and two of that phase-in percentage, but years three, four, five, and six are not in legislative code as of today. So the Fair School Funding Plan Work Group 2.0 is a reconvening of the original work group, and myself, and several other advocates. We are going to spend the next couple of years making sure that we can get to our legislators and have conversations about the importance of fully funding that formula, and continuing the work that is there to help schools be, or help students be funded where they're educated. So we're really excited that that work's gonna continue, and we hope that will have a positive effect on that continued funding. Once we get to the five-year forecast, we'll talk more about the components of the Fair School Funding Plan and how they impact Old Tangi. We have wrapped up the pricing for our bond refunding on August 26th. You may remember passing the resolution to do that refunding. We have gone through the pricing and intend to close in October. But we do have the statistics and information about actually selling those bonds on the market. So we have a net present value savings of 7.1 million, or 8.9% achieved for that particular sale. So we're pretty excited about that return. Again, that helps the district and the taxpayers save on interest costs associated with that debt. So always happy to make a positive return on that. We have several action items. I'll go through the August Board Financials with you first. So the district has received the second half of property tax settlements from both Delaware County and Franklin County. We also have Board of Revision Cases that are coming in. Settlement offers coming in higher than we anticipated, so that's a good thing. When a Board of Revision Case goes to court, it's the property owner contending that their valuation is usually too high and they want it lowered. So you, working with our partners, Rich and Gillis, they are, that attorney firm sees that case in court and helps us work through a settlement or negotiated agreement to help retain some of the tax dollars that might have been lost if the valuation was just dropped without any negotiations. So that's a good thing for us to continue to work on. Again, Fair School Funding Plan is not acted, enacted yet. We are still being funded at last year's state levels, so we'll get those updates soon. And then currently, our expenditures are approximately sixteen percent of where we should be year-to-date, so pretty well on target, and not anything that we are looking at in terms of an anomaly or change to the forecast. We also wanna reiterate that again, we are not eligible for S R two or S R three funds. I know I beat that like a dead horse sometimes, but it's important to understand that we don't have any additional federal funds coming to help with the pandemic expenditures. We have Board Meeting Minutes, amended appropriations. Our appropriations adjustments are really just budget adjustments that we would like to have the board approve. And then for donations, we have two that are... we have two that are on the agenda this evening. $1,500 from Performance Georgesville to the Liberty High School Dance Team Club, and just over $5,700 in school supplies from Monica McGardle to Oak Creek. So we're very grateful for that. And we also recognize that there are in-kind donations of time and efforts coming from our community as well. So we want to thank everyone for all of their support that they give to the students and staff of the Olentangie community. The final item is our medical and dental insurance premiums. So we've gone through the review process of looking at our plans, how are the claims running, if they're running high and low, considering the reserves that we have in those funds, and also looking at whether or not we can meet the recommended increase, or if we need the full increase that's coming from those carriers. So what we have on the agenda is a 5% in medical premiums and a 2.17% to dental. While the dental increase sounds a little, a little poignant because it has those decimal points to it, that is a fully funded account, so the dental carrier gets to be a little more specific with us, while the medical is fully, or excuse me, self-insured. So we have some room to round that out and make it even. Our claims are running good for our medical. What we are seeing however though is the decreased claims that we had when the pandemic closed down services. It's starting to kind of spike and come back up. The last three months have been a little bit higher than we would like to see, having a claims loss ratio over 100%. So we're not sure exactly where that will plateau, but even with considering that, that 5% should still allow us to keep our reserves and keep that maintained as we should by best practices and still provide wonderful benefits to our staff. Are there questions that I can answer for you on any of those items?
Mr. O'Brien, how do those insurance rates stack up to industry standards?
No, I mean, that's, that's what I would expect to see, you know, if it gets really out of market. Also, the only other comment I make is, on the, the bond refinancing, you know, the treasurer's office has done a really good job of managing the debt portfolio, you know?
Thank you.
We don't kind of just set it and forget it. We're out actively managing the portfolio, getting the interest rates as low as possible. So I think that's a continued good story for the district.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll let you get back to your chair, because next is public participation, and Mrs. Hatfield runs public participation. As we've started doing now, for public participation, when people sign up, they put their form in this bin, and Ms. Hatfield draws it out. Once she calls your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes to give your, to speak, and we have a total of 30 minutes set aside for public participation. Did I miss anything, Ms. Hatfield?
No, that's actually pretty much everything. The only other item I would add is that participants are not to cede their time to another member of the audience, please. And other than that, I think you've got it all covered. Okay?
Thank you. Sorry, this is a bit dramatic, but give me just a second to grab the first participant. Okay, our first participant is Ms. Teri Yuline. If you wouldn't mind joining us at the podium by the flag, well, there's a flag on either corner. I guess up here by where you're seated. Forgive me for that. If you would state your name, and then I will start the timer.
Good evening. My name is Teri Yuline. I live at 284 Stone Corry Drive, Delaware, Ohio. We've been residents in this district for over 15 years. My husband and I have been married 34 years, and we have three grandsons. Our boys graduated from Liberty High School. My oldest two now have graduated college and have successful careers, and my youngest son is a senior at Miami of Ohio. I have been invested in Olentangie local schools and our community for all of these years. I have volunteered in the buildings for athletics, worked for the Lovies, and now I've been in aid at Orange High School for the past 10 years. Our district's ability to take on a global pandemic that we've never seen before and create three models of learning within a few months' time has been nothing short of miraculous. This district serves 22,500 students and has 2,700 employees. I'd like to thank some of the departments for their efforts over the past 18 months. First, I need to start with our teaching staff. I watched my teachers, who are always busy prepping, teaching, collabing, and grading in any given year, they stepped up to the changing models of learning, as well as creating digital learning of their materials meant to be taught in person. Our teachers had constant interruptions of kids out ill or just struggling from the awful set of circumstances that affected these kids in so many ways. But our loving and gracious teaching staff had a smile on their faces and worked a double time to keep their academics moving and balance it with the social emotional issues the pandemic has caused. A thank you to support staff, office staff, counselors, and school psych. These people fielded an unbelievable amount of phone calls and tried to help parents navigate through the technology pieces, and endless planning of adoptive graduation plans and prom changes, all with a smile on their face. Thank you to our incredible food service department. In addition to how they serve breakfast and lunch to our students while in the building, since the beginning of the pandemic, they have also boxed 2,170,073 meals to go home with kids while they were not in school. This was an unbelievable task that they had down to a science. A thank you to our great custodial maintenance departments. They worked their regular job, plus had to prepare the building for all the PPE needed, as well as cleaning things constantly and restocking every room in the district with PPE. Kudos to our nurses office, who had to deal with the quarantines, isolation, as well as fielding massive amounts of phone calls, and help educate the parents who needed some help with the COVID, all on top of their regular full-time duties, and all with a smile, but no extra help. Kudos to our bus drivers for all the adjustments that were made over this past year and a half. The kids were always taken care of, even though they had a shortage of drivers due to the virus itself. A fantastic job to our administration at both central and building levels. Running a district is already a stressful job, and add the unknowns this virus brought, and their ability to tackle transitioning from school, regular school, to remote, back to hybrid, and then back onto full-on learning in 18 months. Lastly, a big thank you to you, our board of education. Our board members give thousands of hours to our district. They are paid a very small amount, but they give this district an unbelievable amount of their time. Their dedication to our community is truly remarkable. The past 18 months have indeed been rough, but it has been a real privilege to walk into our school every day and see this staff come together to serve our students and families. My own children received the best education any parent could hope for from Olentangie. My boys were prepared to move on to college, but nobody can prepare their child for a global pandemic. It was not easy on any family, mine included. However, none of us will get through life without rough times, but we can come together and help our students, and that's what I choose to see over the past year. A group of 2,700 employees who care for the kids in this district academically, socially, and emotionally. If we want our children to be gracious, kind, and loving adults, then we must be the example of those traits. Great job, Olentangie, on being positive in the face of overwhelming and ever-changing needs from the pandemic. This pandemic has made us stronger adults, and our children have grown and gotten stronger as well. I hope everyone will take a minute and find someone who has helped their child through this and thank them. Thank you to the district I've been proud to serve as both volunteer and employee.
Thank you. Next, we have Abby Ryan, I believe. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abby Ryan, and my address is 766 Treebun Drive, Westerville. Since the beginning of the pandemic in 2020, I have been an avid mask wearer. To school, grocery stores, and even to work. And just to share, in December of 2020, I contracted the COVID virus. That December, I had one of the toughest moments of my life. While I was done with COVID, I lost all short-term memory for about two months. So if you're still skeptical, yes, COVID is real, and it's not the flu. And wearing a mask is nowhere near the painful reality of having brain fog. And to sit here today, I think it's more important than ever to share why it is imperative to wear masks in school. To be called names by adults over the choice over what I put on my face is honestly disgusting. And to be more transparent, disgust me even more that some of the people here today make up things to get out of wearing them, such as fake medical conditions and claiming your rights are being violated. This virus will not end until you protect the people around you and wear a mask. In May of 2019, I lost one of my good friends and her whole family to carbon monoxide poisoning. And to even suggest that wearing a mask could cause effects as serious that is atrocious. It is absolute lunacy that one of, that some of you could ever connect to the pain I felt losing them, to the small inconvenience a piece of cloth has caused you. Sure, no one wants to wear a mask, and I can agree with that. However, there is absolutely no clinical research to prove the theory of masks causing carbon monoxide poisoning are correct. If I may, I'm going to draw a parallel: wearing a seatbelt. Here's a brief important history lesson. In 1968, seatbelts began to be mandated by states. Like with everything, there was serious backlash, but I'm going to show statistics. In 2019, nearly half of passenger vehicle occupants who died in crashes were not wearing seatbelts. And just to add, from 1975 to 2017, seatbelts have saved an estimated 374,196 lives. Research shows that just by wearing a mask, 100,000 lives could be saved every four months. Those could be friends, family members, teachers, and even neighbors. The idea of a mask is sort of like a seatbelt. Every time you drive, it doesn't mean you will need it to save you, the same way that wearing a mask cannot 100% protect you from infection. But I must emphasize the word precaution. Wearing a seatbelt is a safety precaution, just like wearing a mask. I believe that it is imperative for the health and safety of our communities to continue to mandate masks for middle and elementary school students. These students don't have the option to get vaccinated, therefore they shouldn't have the option to wear a mask. A few weeks ago, there was an argument brought up saying the average age of COVID contraction is 79. While this is somewhat true, I would like to counter that with evidence I found on coronavirus ohio.gov. The most rapid rate of increase and highest COVID cases were among young adults ages 18 to 24. May I take a moment to remind everyone here that the world does not revolve around them? And to also add that there are teachers, coaches, administrators, janitors, and even secretaries that are around that age. Just because you feel invincible to a virus does not mean that everyone else here is. That means that just because you don't have a compromised immunity, that other people do not. The teachers in this district do more than you will ever understand, to facilitate maximum learning for all, right? How are they supposed to do that when there's a colossal amount of disrespect from parents and students who won't do the kind thing and wear a mask? So in conclusion, I'm not here to tell you to get vaccinated, or that we need to go back to hybrid learning. What I am here to say is that wearing masks saves lives. I am very thankful your family may be healthy. However, to broaden your horizons and think about those who aren't is the biggest step we can take to eradicate COVID. And to answer the question brought up at August board meeting, where does it end? Well, to Ashley Clemens, it ends when you do what's right for the health and safety of others and wear a mask. Thank you.
May I have Jeff Ogilvy, please?
My name is Jeff Ogilvy. I live at 277 Donrell Avenue in Powell. I'm a software developer. I spend a lot of my time in my head. I'm a news junkie. I'm a stats junkie, and I'm watching what's going on in our world right now, and it's, it's concerning. But just yesterday, I'm sitting in my office, and I overhear my wife ask my 16-year-old, "Hey, someone in your class has come down with COVID. I wonder if you know it?" And my son's like, "No." Well, she goes on, "I hope you didn't get too close to him." He's like, "Well, why?" "Well, because if you got too close to him, you're gonna be quarantined." And he's like, she goes, "That means you won't make your, or you won't be able to go to your next two cross-country events." And he happens to really love cross-country, so this, this hit him hard. And he's just like, "Well, that's crazy." That, that kind of got to me, and I wanted to put something together, and so I did today. It's not all that great, but it's talking about masks, vaccines, and social distancing. So what did I take away from what was said? It seems to me like we're teaching our children to stay away from each other. We're teaching them in their formative years that they need to be, you know, almost unsocial, like they need to keep a distance in order to be able to do the things that they want to do. I mean, I, I think that's terrible. But when you add masks, when you add masks to this, so now you're telling them, "Stay away," and then hide half of those. Man, what, what is that saying to them? That's saying that other people are toxic, okay? I think that's horrible. Yeah, just think about, like, when you're developing friendships, you know, people talk about body language all the time, and they focus on, you know, head movements and, you know, body movements and that kind of stuff. But think about the facial, what's going on on your face. You know, when you kind of practice math, you know, your, your face has thousands of different things that it can express without words. And not recovering that. In children, in their formative years, we're not letting them build strong bonds with other people because they can't see, they can't, they can't intuit what the other person is saying. All they can see is their eyes. So I know some of you, especially Abby, is not gonna like what I have to say next, but, you know, like I said, I, I look at stats, I look at the numbers. Oh my God, I've talked for a long time already. Well, many of you might have seen a meme going around. People are saying, "Hey, look at this, look at this meme. This proves that masks work. This proves that, you know, masks are gonna save lives." Well, it shows a row of Petri dishes, and on one side, the Petri dishes are, you know, from top to bottom, it says, you know, "One sneeze, singing, talking, and two coughs." And then they compare the Petri dishes to-
One minute.
-mask and no mask. The, the problem is here that, you know, the smallest bacteria we know of is about four microns, or .4 microns, I'm sorry. So four millions of a meter in diameter, while viruses range from .02 to .25 microns. That's a 180% difference in size, okay? Just from looking at it like a software developer. You know, just to get an idea, and this isn't gonna be perfect, but if this were bacteria, the smallest bacteria, and this were a normal virus, that's a big huge difference, okay? It's supposed to be a ping pong ball, it's a golf ball, and it's supposed to be a basketball, it's inflated, but it's not. But it still gets my point across. We need to, you know, if you take a look at these masks under a microscope-
That's time, please. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Douglas Cook, please?
Good evening. My name is Douglas Cook, and I reside at 6811 Jennifer Ann Drive in McCammon Chase Subdivision Lewis Center. Thank you, Mrs. Wagner Fiesel, Mr. Rafe, and school board members for providing a forum in which district residents can speak. I can only imagine how stressful the past number of months have been on you and your loved ones. It's evident that the positions you fill are often thankless by their very nature. But- But recently, it seems they have become much more so. We're all familiar with the saying that if we continue to do what we've always done, we will continue to get what we've always gotten. I believe that to be true. So I want to avoid rehashing the Betober masks, vaccines, and the like. This evening, I would like to address an issue that I believe goes far deeper than anything else, and it's being ignored by many in our community. You, Mrs. Wagner Fiesel, addressed it during the board meeting two weeks ago, but it was ignored and certainly not practiced that night. The issues to which I am referring are the absence of the acceptance of and respect for others and their opinions, regardless of our own, and enough courtesy to follow protocol when participating in or attending a meeting. The behaviors of a number of those in attendance, as well as those in the audience during most recent board meetings, were embarrassing, to say the least. Based on what I see, hear, and read, the actions of far too many members of our community do not seem representative of those interested truly in putting needs of all of our kids first. The actions and attitudes demonstrated are unconscionable, unacceptable, and most importantly, not what I want modeled for my daughter or granddaughters, all of whom attend Olentangie schools. What must our children think when the behaviors of so many adults would not be permitted on an elementary school playground? I know because I supervise playgrounds for the better part of my 35 years in education. I include myself when I share the opinion that we should all be ashamed of any contributions we've made to what has become as volatile a situation as a legendary Hatfields and McCoys of years gone by. Is what has been taking place in our school community, some on school property, something we want our children to record in their memory books? Or read in old newspaper articles? Is it what we want them to emulate when they disagree with someone else's opinions and beliefs? I can't speak for anyone other than myself, but I certainly don't. My opinions are not going to change, and those of others probably won't either. But can't we, as adults, put aside our differences, agree to disagree, and seek harmony, knowing unanimity is a pipe dream? I didn't like being called fact by community members who hold opinions and beliefs different than mine. I didn't like having someone Photoshop a cat mask over my face in a picture taken on the sidewalk at central office and then put online while, again, mentioning my overweight, being overweight, like I didn't know it. I was offended being told to keep them home when referring to my girls, one of whom was born early, weighing one pound and nine ounces, with cerebral palsy, and another with severe breathing problems. I was taken aback, being told to put a muzzle on my kindergarten's face to protect her when she goes to school. Who doesn't says that thing, says those things about anyone, let alone a five-year-old? In conclusion, I have one request of you, Mrs. Wagner Fiesel and you, the school board. And that is that you tighten the reins of board meetings by requiring the protocol you mentioned before audience participation be followed to the T. And that you shut down all who choose not to follow it. The mockery that has been made of our school district, of recent board members, and yes, you who sit up on the platform by some members of our community is one of the poorest reflections on Olentangie schools that I can imagine. And I was an employee here for 16 years. Board members should be one school function where decorum is the norm rather than the exception. I apologize on behalf of those who don't think they have to follow rules, those who think they have the right to make fun of others. I suspect they would rationalize that those behaviors are their right to be heard and opinions to be expressed. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Janine King?
Hello. Now, can you hear? Is this... okay.
Yes, thank you.
Janine King, I'm not going to disclose my address. You have it on file mainly because I'm going to speak about my son, and I really... I know that people do tend to videotape these things, and I have no desire to have my address published in social media, as you all know how that can go.
That's part of our policy, Janine.
I'm sorry?
That's part of the policy. It has to be read into the minutes.
Okay, then the policy should be that everybody put their phones at the front of the room when they walk in, as it says on the door.
We're not passing policies right now, but if you could just state your name and address, that would be fine.
Janine King, 4584 Grayson Drive, Powell, Ohio.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fiesel, I have actually had really good relationships with Mr. Rafe, Dr. Fettie, Mrs. Davis, when we've met. I've actually had really super great conversations with them. I actually met with the head of diversity and inclusion, as well as Dr. Lewis, and we had great conversation as well. I actually feel for you, being up there and taking what you do, I do. But I am gonna just... I'm not here to talk about masks, but I am gonna make one comment. The only two people's faces that I can see up there are Mrs. Hatfield and Mr. O'Brien's faces. And I actually appreciate it because I can see if you have a reaction to something that someone says. I think part of the problem at these board meetings is we don't have... we get no reaction back, and we now can't see... we now can't see your reactions.
Can you hear Mrs. King? Please be quiet. Thank you.
And we now can't see your reactions either. And so that's one of the reasons that I also do not believe that our kids should be masked. And this mask, and this is coming from a mother whose son is currently in counseling. So yes, I do understand that people are dying, but kids are dying too. The mental health of our children, mental health illnesses, has risen 30% over the last 18 months. And if we ignore that, we ignore a whole entire segment of the population. So yes, I feel for you, Abby. I would never, ever say anything to anyone that chooses to wear a mask. But for my son, I am thankful, Mr. Rafe, for allowing us to have exemptions because he needs to have one for his mental health capacity. But that, again, is not the reason why I'm here. The reason why I'm here is because I'm tired of doing your job. I'm tired of doing the job of the teachers and what they should be doing, and the administration in the buildings, and approval of certain material that's being disseminated to our students. I had an email conversation with Dr. Fettie, which I appreciate, and I appreciate your response. He was here, I think he is still here. I appreciated his response and that things are going to be changing, hopefully. But I wanted to read for you today something that came from a book that was on the approved reading list and is still listed as an approved alternate for a source that was disseminated to ninth-grade students this year. Now, I'd like for you to imagine that your student, your child... I know many of you have children, maybe all of you have children, and potentially grandchildren. And so I'd like you to listen to these words, and then I'd like for you to consider, not banning books, but consider taking vulgarity out of the classroom. Our kids are already hypersexualized enough through social media and other sources of material. To have a teacher actually provide this book to a child and ask them to read it, to me, is absolutely disgusting and sickening. And I personally don't want a teacher teaching my child about sexual interactions. That is up to me to do. "Do you know what masturbation is? You probably do because you're older than me. But just in case, I will tell you. Masturbation is when you rub your genitals until you have an orgasm." Wow, I thought that was just in those movies when they have a coffee break. Maybe they should have a masturbation break. I guess I forgot to mention in my last letter that it was Patrick who told me about masturbation. I guess I also forgot to tell you about how often I do it now, which is a lot. I just close my eyes and dream about a lady I don't know, and I try to feel ashamed. One night, I felt so guilty, I promised God that I would never do it again. So I started using blankets, but the blankets hurt. So I started using pillows, but the pillows hurt. So I went back to normal. They closed the door and started kissing, kissing very hard. After a few minutes, the boy's hands went up the girl's shirt. The boy kept working up the girl's shirt, and as much as she said...
One minute, please?
I'll skip to the good part. "I think they were both very drunk. He reached to take off her pants, but she started crying really hard, so he reached for his own. He pulled his pants and his underwear down to his knees. She grabbed his penis with her hand and started moving it. After a few minutes, the boy pushed the girl's head down, and she started to kiss his penis. Finally, she stopped crying because he put his penis in her mouth, and I don't think you can cry in that position." Do we think that this is appropriate material for a ninth grader, for 14-year-olds? I would say no. This is disgusting. Today, I took my eight-year-old to the zoo, and I watched her play with things and do things that she did when she was four years old. And I thought, "Man, this is amazing. And why are we trying to steal the innocent of our 14-year-old students?" I just implore you to start researching these materials in a deeper way so that we make sure that the materials that are presented to our kids are appropriate and are not full of vulgar things like what I just read to you.
Next, we have board action item, and it's to approve Stephen...
We have one more.
Oh, we do?
And we have five minutes left, please.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Mr. Dan Sanchez?
My name's Dan Sanchez, 230 Keter Drive, Delaware. I'm getting rid of back to COVID and my objection to the district's policy on COVID. So I'm gonna say a lot of stuff that I disagree with, but I'm gonna start where I think we may agree, and that's that respiratory viruses increase the probability of transmission when you are in close contact for extended periods of time. Like, we can all agree on that?
We agree.
Okay. So that's important because that's the premise that will allow us to talk about some data. So I want to talk about a study in the Journal of the American Medical Association, published in December of 2020, in which the investigators looked at over 77,000 participants in a study to examine the question, "What is the transmission rate between family members in the same household?" And that's interesting because they live together, so it's close proximity for extended periods of time. Two things you need for the recipe. What they found, the highest rate was between spouses, and that was 40%. And the lowest rate that they found was when the initial case was asymptomatic, so no symptoms, living with a large family, lots of kids. And in those cases, the transmission rate was 0.7%. So that's seven cases for every 1,000 family members that were exposed, okay? So to put that in perspective, I want to paint a picture for you. So I want to do a thought experiment. So I'd like everyone to close your eyes and imagine a neighborhood in Olentangie with 250 houses. I want you to imagine that in each house, we have five family members, one of which is COVID-positive and asymptomatic. They are exposing four other family members. So we're starting with 250 cases, and we have 250 times four is 1,000 family members being exposed, producing seven new cases. 250 asymptomatic cases are required to produce seven new cases. That's interesting because I was led to believe that a single asymptomatic student sitting at a lunch table for 15 minutes could produce seven new cases. I was led to believe that that individual was so contagious that it justifies me having to quarantine my healthy child for another 10 days, maybe all of their children too. So I look at that, and I think, "Wow, 15 minutes, lunchroom, that doesn't really sound scientific. That sounds kind of arbitrary." And so I start to wonder what other arbitrary policies are in store for us from the district. And so I'd like to engage in a second thought experiment where we imagine what's happening in the future. Respiratory viruses typically have some sort of seasonality. And if COVID is the same, in about a month or two, despite all of our best efforts, our community is going to have increased cases, and there's going to be pressure on you to do something about it. Okay, so I'd like everybody for a second thought experiment, go ahead and close your eyes again, and I want you to imagine, go time travel two months in the future, and imagine what new policies are being put into place. Is it plastic dividers in the lunchroom? Is it social distancing in recess? Maybe it'll cancel wrestling, cancel basketball, cancel band, but only the woodwinds and the brass instruments, everyone else can stay. Maybe it'll be back to hybrid, or maybe it'll be 100% remote. What's in store? All perfectly arbitrary, none of it based on science. And I can say that with confidence because you are not going to disprove the null hypothesis. You will not attempt to explain to us how a school in another district, in another state, in another country that is maskless, that is not distancing, that is not quarantining, isn't any worse off than us. So you have to see the frustration building in the community as you keep pushing and pushing and pushing, asking more of us while producing no results. And so I'd like to invite everybody for the third and final thought experiment. Again, I'd like you to close your eyes and imagine yourself, well, right back here in this auditorium. I want you to imagine that you're looking out at the community. Their frustration is growing over these policies that they perceive to be nonsensical or perfectly arbitrary.
One minute, please?
And they're starting to ask questions. They're starting to push back. And then all of a sudden, you look out, and you realize that if we push them too far, they might realize that they're in the majority. After all, for the first two days at school, a majority of parents did not mask their kids. So if you keep pushing and pushing and pushing, we might just realize that we actually have the power. Your rules and your regulations have no teeth if we just stand up together and say we will not comply. And that's a magical moment where your heart starts beating on your heart, on your voice. You can feel the words forming on your lips. You start to say it, and somebody else joins in. The whole room starts to wait. You push us too far, and you'll have a roomful of people saying, "We will not comply. We will not comply. We will not comply. We will not comply." We'll go for five minutes, then the next one will stand up. "We will not comply. We will not comply." We're done.
That's time, please?
We will not play this game anymore.
Thank you.
"We will not comply."
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the board action item to approve Stephen Toppsky as the new member for the board facilities committee. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yep.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hatfield, do you want to present treasure action items?
Yes, please. I'd like to present treasure action items A through F for your approval, please.
Do I have a motion?
Salute.
So move.
That Dr. Weiss and Mr. O'Brien?
Yep.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rafe, can you present the superintendent action item?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to present superintendent action items A through F for approval.
Do I have a motion through A through F, please?
I will move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I just want to say, thank you, Peggy. We're gonna miss you. Is she still here? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now I just want to remind everyone that the next meeting is Tuesday, October the 12th. We'll tell you where it's gonna be. It depends on what's available. And now I need a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mindy and Lakisha, or Lakisha and Mindy?
Got it.
Call the roll, please.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yep.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.